All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our city council meeting to order. We will start with an invocation from Bishop Thomas Lee McDonald.
Let us bow our head. Father, right now in the mighty name of Jesus, we give you praise and honor and glory. We ask you to bless every leader, Lord, that are here, Lord. Bless their family, friends. Father, right now in the mighty name of you, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We realize that you have been good to us, Lord, down through the years. Father, we thank you for all things, Lord. Contended to strengthen us, Lord, in the time of need. Father, we thank you for all things. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Everybody say, "Amen."
Thank you, sir. Next is adoption of agenda.
So moved.
All in favor? All right, number four, approval of consent agenda. All in favor? All right, item number five, comments from attendees. Do we have any?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Esko.
All right, well, good evening. My name is Esko Latimer. I'm the resident off of Highway 74 with Orange Door. I think everybody knows me. If you don't, let me introduce myself again. First, I would like to sincerely thank the City of Hamlet for issuing the recent notice of public for the water system and the noncompliance with certain treatment requirements. I think it reflects the city council and administration, and the facilities director, Mr. Robert Brown, are paying close attention to our water on behalf of the citizens, and the transparency is greatly appreciated. In the spirit of collaboration, I would like to humbly offer a few suggestions, if you don't mind, that could build upon the swift and the responsible action above given by the administration and the city council. I recommend that the city consider distributing water testing kits to the residents who may be impacted by this issue. But here's where Hamlet can be a little bit different and lead by example. Instead of the generic kits, we could provide targeted kits designed to detect issues specific to our communities such as lead, mercury, and most importantly, microorganisms. Now, there's a reason why I say "microorganisms," because these pose serious health risks. Bacteria spreading and viruses could affect residents, even though they may not have any direct contact with them, indirect contact, or maybe brushing or washing your teeth, I mean, sorry, brushing your teeth or just washing. Exposure could lead to issues that disproportionately affect women, including hair loss or disruption in pH balance due to physiological sensitivities. This is a public health concern that needs to be kind of addressed and a little more proactive, and that's just my opinion. And as always, I didn't come here to criticize anyone, but to contribute potential solutions to everyone. I understand that budgetary challenges that John has inherited, and I completely understand how that can hinder some projects and some programs. So I did print out a list of potential avenues in which the city and the council can maybe look over and review, and I'm going to hand that out real quick. All right, so in the spirit of collaborations and never try to undermine anyone's authority here, there was three that I particularly liked, and that was the state and federal grants, the EPA programs, environmental justice small grants, and the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. That was one I liked. The American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds, eligible for a community with health initiatives like water quality. Two, partnerships, universities like North Carolina A&amp;T, NC State. We can contact their labs and see if we can get the labs to maybe analyze the water's force. We have, I did find some nonprofits, the water advocacy groups such as Clean Water Action and the Waterkeeper Alliance. And three, as always, local business like AWS, they may want a partnership in there. And then my last one, and I did send a, put an attachment to that on the utility-based solution I came up with, which is a small fee of $6.50 per month, if you want to add that to the customer's bill. Now, that's optional, they can opt into it or opt out of it. And if you pair that with a grant, right now, I got the average cost from the Health Department Director, a test is about $150. That will test for metals and microorganism, bacteria, which is what we need to be testing for. Now, we divide that over 12 months, that's $12.50 a month, divided by two is $6.50, half the city, half the citizens, if we can get a grant to offset the cost for the citizens. That's it. Yeah, so I was there this morning, and I spoke with them, and this is kind of the way they directed me this route.
May I say, I think probably you need to talk to Mr. Brown. Our water goes through extensive testing, almost weekly, both at this level and at the state level, so a lot of this testing's already done. I mean, it's tested for leads, metals, and microorganisms, and, you know, this, I think that might clarify some of this, because he could familiarize you with the portion of this that we're already doing.
Well, I think, you know, I think if you burn the counter from both ends, yes, you're saying that this is being done, but as a citizen, if you're saying, you're a little more proactive and say, "Hey, you can also test it to verify that what we're saying," I think you send a stronger message as a council, which I think you've already done by sending out the correspondence, and as an administration, they've already done. So I think you just give the citizens the opportunity to say, "Yes, you know what? They're on track. We're good to go. I feel safe." My water's a little bit brown sometimes. I can smell the chlorine in it, and I know that the young man who just passed his test for the water treatment plant, he's new, he's going to make mistakes, that's understandable. But as these notices go out, if a kid maybe wants to, as each letter go out, if a kid could go out with it, I think that would ease the citizens' minds.
You're talking about the quality, Esko, about the water quality and its safety to the users?
Yes, sir.
Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
More, a better quality of water?
Yes, sir. I'm not saying that we're not trying. That's not what I'm saying. What I would like to say is, I'm more proactive, I like to get ahead of a problem than trying to, it's catching me by the tail.
I do, too.
You know, so I, being healthy and young, I can ward off some viruses and bacteria. I'm, in Marine Corps, you've eaten a lot of things, and, you know, you just kind of go with it, and stomach hurts a little while, and you roll with it. But most of our population are not my age. They are more mature in years than I am, and because of that, they don't bounce back as fast, or if at all. And so if they had an opportunity to say, "Hey, I found something particularly in my water," because we're all imperfect, mistakes will happen, the young man, I'm not saying he's not doing a bad job, but he does have to learn, he has to get acclimated, and as he's doing so, this will give the opportunity to the citizens to say, "Well, maybe I need to do something a little different for myself."
And what about lookout for?
Yes.
I just, I want to provide facts for council and for the public. So on May 25th and May 26th, the plan exceeded the state limit of .3 Intu turbidity for two days due to delays in copper sulfite treatment and clarifier maintenance. Both issues were corrected lowering the turbidity. However, this, this sparked a violation with the state, as the state meticulously reviews every numbers that go through our system, and even the slightest over, the number going over will cause what's called the violation and then requires a public notification. The risk analysis for this turbidity violation for public health is extremely low, and our microbiological operations report for that month, the following month, and the following month showed zero signs of any microbiological operate, or microbiological issues within the water. That said, you know, you're also assuming that this has to do with a young man, it has nothing to do with a young man.
I didn't assume anything about him. I said he was doing a great job.
No, you didn't assume.
So am I right, am I wrong about assuming that?
No, you didn't assume, and you said that he's going to make mistakes. It had nothing to do with who's running our water.
Isn't that normal that anybody makes mistakes?
What's that?
Isn't that normal that anybody makes mistakes?
It is normal that, that people make mistakes, however.
Awesome, thank you.
It's not normal for somebody to assume that it was somebody that it wasn't.
Well, given to a citizen that's here in the, that lives here and you don't live here.
You had your, you had your moment to speak, sir.
Some of the water is brown in my home, and again, I just think it'd be a little more proactive, and it's just a suggestion jar.
And again, sir, you had your time to speak, so, and I asked council for my time to speak, so I want to provide my response.
Well, I thank you for your time, and I've had my five minutes. I think you've had your response, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Esko.
I've got one statement I'd like to ask.
Yes, sir.
Question. About the contamination when it's put on the water, on our, when it sends out a water bill, the water's contaminated.
That's, that's what Mr. Latimer's talking about, and what happens is anytime there's a, a small fluctuation within the turbidity, then it triggers a state violation. That is what we would call a moderate risk through the state. However, the public health risk is low. Our documentation of the reports that talk about the microbiological effects on the population were zero across the board for month after month. So just because it sparked a violation did not mean it put the public health at risk.
But it is a risk. Did you say there's a minor risk?
What, what I'm saying is that we have the report that shows zero microbiological risk.
So the public is not at risk to drink the water?
That's correct.
Well, he did say "risk," and I know when I can smell my tap water, because I live here. Thank you.
Well, I get a lot of questions about the odor from it and the coloration of it myself, but I don't.
Thank you, Esko.
I get it myself. Thank you, Esko.
Do we have, do we have anybody else who'd like to speak?
I say, Gerard.
What's going on, brother Aska? How's everybody?
I'm well, how are you?
Madam Mayor, council, staff, citizens, my name is Gerard Anthony Morrison from the beloved city of Hamlet, North Carolina, birthplace of John W. Coltrane. It's coming up less than 60 days, the 17th Annual John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest, where we bridge education with entertainment, where we believe in polishing the diamonds in our own backyard. We focus on 13 counties in North Carolina, eight counties in South Carolina, Hamlet being the epicenter, and I want to make sure we know that the edutainment is not just music, it's poetry, it's art, it's dance, design, model, engineering, producers, singers, and I especially want to push authors and poets this year. A lot of us have a story, a lot of us have our truth, the truth, but in these challenging times, no matter what your situation is, the arts have been a way to creatively express yourself. It's also been a chronicle for history at that point in time. So we want to make sure, in addition to people being safe, that they feel free to express themselves, and you feel supported, and you feel that things are fair and equitable. So this is the platform that does give you that. The land that we use has been owned in the U.S., one of the few occasions where African-Americans have owned that land more than 200 years, and it's certified. The Mumfitt Ingram Quick and Bright families have definitely taken care of that land. But this year, I want to make sure, the Water Department, last year, we didn't get on the bill. I want to make sure we got Coltrane Fest on the bill this year, not the charge on the bill, let me make sure I clarify that, but to make sure we're promoting it on the water bill that goes in every household. But we do have some spaces left, also for vendors, exhibitors, sponsors, suppliers. All right, y'all heard me come in last year, because I'm looking in front of us, we got three and three. No, actually, four. Aska, you did. You got, so four of six of the board have been on there, so looking forward to see the other two. Won't call you by name, but I know you mean well, so hopefully we'll see you there, October 4th, 12 o'clock sharp, and this year, I don't.
Where's it going to be at, Gerard?
The Faith Center, same place. You have the, you go for doing Mark with the King that Monday. But thank God, I do need to say that address, I appreciate you, Clues. It's 1-9-3-5, Gyo, Osborne Road. I fly at say both because if you're going down 38 southbound, the left side is Gyo Road, the right side is Osborne. We have had people who GPS'd and ended up in Rockingham on Osborne, but this is Airport Road and Osborne-Gyo. Other part, don't really give the show out, you know, like underpromising and overdelivering, and that's what's kept us afloat for 17 years. But this year, one of the surprises, a lot of folks are doing personal research with ancestry and different things that are coming up. I'm going to share a story, some of y'all met my new sister last year, was three weeks older than me. She went through ancestry, found some folks, and that's my sister, she was also a poet and a singer. So a lot of us have these stories, and love is love, so we got to know and be aware so we can love. But we're going to have a genealogy specialist, we're going to be talking with health issues, education, veterans, sports, economic empowerment, of course, Coltrane and Frederick C. Branch, and Jay Kenneth Lee, who was the foundation for a lot of the black legal process, with black legal history for the entire state of North Carolina. But, uh, again, love to have you all, thanks for the opportunity, and let's continue to celebrate the roots and talents of the North Carolina Sandhills and the South Carolina PD regions.
Gerard, before, before you get going today.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to talk with you a minute.
Definitely, always, Aska.
How can one donate?
We dial the, um, the 347 number on the flyer, and I'll leave one with all of you all. I literally just got back in town, so I'll pull it straight up here, so I have some flyers by the time everybody goes out. But if you're down right now, citizens, do us area code 347-286-8742. That's 347-286-8742. Email is the number four, JCMEF, acronym for John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest@gmail. But if you call, you know, we're going to answer, we believe in the personal attention, and we'll get back with you. And thanks, and thanks for that question, too, Maurice.
Thank you, Gerard.
Thank you, Gerard.
Anybody else want, it's good. Thanks.
Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak? All righty, item number six, resolution to begin upset bid process for city-owned parcel.
So the city was approached by the Flowing Place Church, because they're interested in the, it's not on presentation mode. They're interested in the purchase of a parcel owned by the city. It's identified here, that red parcel, it's 2.25 acres approximately, currently valued at about $30,000. It's Zoned R10, so it's residential, and it's adjacent to their current property as well. So right now, we're just looking to see if the city would be interested in opening the upset bid process as well, because this would be the exact same process that we pursued for those 65-ish acres last month.
You have an offer in hand for the purchase of the property?
Right now, we're just seeing if the city's interested in selling it, because once we, once we determine that fact, they would initiate an initial offer that would come to the city again, that would be publicly advertised for 10 days, and then that would begin the upset bid process.
That was tax value, you're correct?
Yes, that's correct.
But Kenzie, how would that be, how would that be advantage to the city for us to own that property?
Well, currently, it's a vacant lot, I think it's just a wooded area. If you want to go to the next slide, it's actually got quite a bit of wetland on it, so I'm not sure what the advantage would be, but they approached us and that they were interested in it. We let them know the state of the property, and they were still interested, so I told them, we would take it to you.
They're, they're clearing the property now, or is that the area?
No, it's, it's behind the church.
Behind the church.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So that top, that top parcel up there is Highland Avenue, and the gray building is the church.
Well, I live behind, I live behind the church.
Yeah, so I think that part, that parcel right there, that 9358, I believe that's your parcel. So it, it would be to your left.
Okay, I see where it's at, called down on 175, that 9358 is where it is.
Mm-hmm, so we're looking at the 7395, right next to it.
That is a wetland, doesn't the city have a, is, hasn't that been just declared wetland before?
Yeah, so that blue area there has been determined as wetlands.
Can't use it for anything, and there's some kind of pump there, is it a sewage pump or whatever?
I, I wouldn't be aware of that, but I'm sure Public Works has a map of it.
When they put it down, it came through there, because, uh, when they had it.
Do we need to determine if there's any utilities, construction on there?
Yeah, we can do that.
Nothing for us to do.
No, just if you're interested in selling or not, is the motion we're looking for now.
And who, who owns that property now?
We do.
City. The city owns it, got you. How would we know the value of the property?
Right now, we just have tax value.
Other than that, I mean, you sell it hard.
We'd have to appraise it, we'd have to have it appraised.
Ori Long, I mean, Ori Hicks owned it for a long, a number of years, because you wanted to be to buy it for years, and I wouldn't buy it because of the wetland.
And, Mr. Martin, on that question, council has several options. You could just direct staff, "Yes, we're interested in selling or not," and then they could permit, submit a proposal, and then it could go through the upset bid process, and there's a number that comes to you at the end, and you can accept or reject it. Council could, before any of that happens, direct staff to get an appraisal done, or you could say, "This is the amount we're interested in selling it for," you know, and that's what we initially accept, you just have to go through the upset bid process. So you've got some options about how you want to proceed.
Well, it's real, real marshy back there, because I have, I've been all through that property before, and sometimes I've gone down almost under my arms, when you drop down in the water into marsh, so. They must want it for some reason. They must want it for some reason, though.
Can we determine if there's, it would be probably a sewage pumping station, wouldn't it?
I would think.
Pumping station on the property.
I'm against selling it.
If there's a pumping station on it, I don't see any advantage to selling it, it could restrict our access to it, so I think we need to determine that before we make a determination. I don't have a problem with selling it, obviously it's not going to be of any advantage to us.
Yeah, so we think there's probably a gravity pump out there, gravity line, sorry.
Just a line or a pump, pumping station? Is it just a line running through the property?
Just a line, Robert.
And then we would maintain that right of way, right?
We would have easement through there.
Yeah, if we sold it, we would keep the easement, okay. I don't have a problem with selling the property if we don't intend to develop it or use it for anything, and, you know, the, so.
So do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we at least entertain.
Do I have a second?
With an appraisal, yes.
With an appraisal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, item number seven, update on sale of 64.99 acres.
So this is the parcel that we discussed, and we've gone through the entire upset bid process already. It was publicly advertised as required by general statute, and we received no further bids, so right now, this is the offer on the table, and you can choose to accept it today or deny the request.
And just one other thing, if council chooses to accept it, what we'll actually do then is we'll have a, a purchase and sale contract that we enter into and kind of go through the whole closing process.
So just some amplifying information on there, there was a question asked about Dusty Trail, that is actually privately owned, so, and we've already talked to the, the people that are interested in purchasing, and I'm telling them we wouldn't be able to put that in the contract, they're perfectly fine with that. And then I've drawn up a, a resolution, if, if we accept the bid as it originally stood, to where I would go ahead and action this and, and get it through closing, working through our attorney, and then bring everything back to council when it's finalized.
I couldn't hear you comment about Dusty Trail.
Dusty Trail is, it's a, it's a privately owned road.
Right.
Yeah, so we wouldn't put that in the contract. I, I think it was council member Clues that, that asked that in a previous meeting, so we tracked it down, and again, we cannot put that in the contract, but outside of that, everything in the initial bid would stand.
Okay. I make a motion that we coordinate and conduct our closing proceedings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, item number eight, authorization for Post 49 to complete improvement projects at Memorial Park.
So I sat down with Post 49 not too long ago, Chip Gordon, and specifically, and they have received a lot of grant money that they want to put into Memorial Park Baseball Field specifically, with, instead of, you know, coming to council for a project after project after project, what I did was have him send me the projects that he wanted to do with his initial money, put it into a resolution, and, let me pull it up real quick, I apologize. So, bottom line, Chip Gordon is proposing to put in a permanent fence in the center field where that, that gap is currently, new access gate in the existing right field, installation of new windscreen throughout the entire outfield, addition of a new light pole in the left center field to improve the outfield lining, and relocation of existing infield pole lights to the new outfield pole, installation of a new wide beam angle lights on the infield to help with the, the night illumination, repainting of a covered breezeway from brown to blue, installation of double door on small storage building to allow for the storage of equipment, and then repainting of the storage building as well. I've actually, I've additionally added into this resolution that all these projects, if approved by council, will still have to be coordinated through myself or a designee, and then the Hamlet Post 49 shall bear full financial responsibility for all the materials, labor, equipment, installation, and future maintenance or repair resulting from the above-listed project unless otherwise agreed, agreed upon by the city. Any questions?
And they'll be responsible for the disbursement of funds of the grant?
It is their grant. They would manage that grant in its entirety, but just coordination through these projects, make sure they're done correctly, would, would come through administration.
And this has nothing to do with the, uh, the field maintenance as far as the turf, I mean, the, what Mitchell Hodges does yearly?
No, what, what Mr. Gordon and I had spoke about was, was that if it, if it was something that was permanently going to put on the field or change the look of the field, we would bring it to council. If it's just maintenance, he can. or change the look of the field, we would bring it to council. If it's just maintenance, he can continue to do that maintenance through his grant funds. As long as it comes to no cost to the city and as long as he's still working through, through administration.
Did we, didn't we provide for that maintenance, the field maintenance in the budget this year?
We did last year.
It's not in this year's budget?
No.
It's not in this year's budget?
No, it is not. Now, and if I, if I remember correctly, and don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure that the agreement states that Post 49 is actually responsible for, for all maintenance of that field, if they're going to continue to use it.
Maintenance, yeah. But we're talking about the initial turf maintenance, the, the.
The turf building.
And the seeding and the weed chilling and spraying and all that. Post 49 is not equipped to do that kind of work. We always get Mitchell Hodges landscaping to come in to do all that.
When I had spoke to Mr. Gordon, he said that he was going to be using grant funds for, for the maintenance and, and up to the field as well. So I, I, I'm not sure, you know, how things were done in the, the past, but the memorandum of understanding that, that we have in place, I, I believe it specifically puts that maintenance on Post 49. And again, don't quote me on that, but. Can you pull that up by chance?
He may be right, but neither he nor the city has the certifications or whatever it takes to do some.
I understand what you're saying. He would, he, they would bear the financial responsibility through their grant funds. And they would contract out Hodges to, to do that as, as they normally have. Where previously, I think the city had paid for that for, for a few years. And, and now that they have a lot of grant funding coming in, my understanding is that they would bear the financial responsibility.
But we, we're talking about $25,000 and by the time you do what they plan to do with the gate and the fence and this and that, there ain't going to be no money left for no field maintenance as far as not maintenance, but the preparation of the field. Like with the, the spraying and the seeding and the stuff that Mitchell Hodges has been doing for us for several years.
That, that memorandum of understanding was put in place before I got here, so I can't speak on what the city council approved or did not approve.
But is there any way we can amend that and put it in?
Can we pass the resolution as it is now with just the capital improvements? Because these, these grants provide for capital improvements. And then just look at the issue of field maintenance separately. Just do that separately.
I'm looking at the, the, the MOU as it stands and it says during the in-season, Post 49 shall have primary responsibility for maintaining the baseball field, including the infield and outfield and any other grounds associated with the baseball field and related facilities, including but not limited to the parking area. The city shall maintain the baseball field, the, the park area and related facilities during the off season. My conversations with Mr. Gordon and then also with you, council member Martin and, and, and council member Covington was that Post 49 essentially wants to take full responsibility of that field year round and prevent other sports from being played on it so that it doesn't destroy the field.
Well, I think in the past, John, what he is saying is that we have always provided something off season. Mitchell came in and seeded that grass, reseeded it, did whatever was necessary, fertilized it and kind of put it in shape for the season. And 49 maintained it, which consisted of mowing and doing whatever they do during the season. And it shifted back to our responsibility off season. But I think the issue, and that's why I think we initially put like $17,000 maintenance fund, funding in the budget in the past couple of years to provide for this kind of maintenance. That, I think that's what Mr. Martin's speaking to, not to, not to the items on this particular resolutions, which were the items that you and I and Mr. Martin discussed concerning, concerning items to be allocated to grant funds. This is a whole nother item.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think where, where my, my question is on it is last year, that funding was, was not put into the budget. I actually brought it to council and asked for the extra funds. So to say that it had been budgeted over the last several years is, is not accurate as they had to come in last minute. I think in, what was it, in February, March and ask for the funding.
Well, I think the city owns it Memorial Park and we've always kept it. What, how, what does the Parks and Recreation Director, what does Mr. McLaren think about that? That comes under heading of his job, maintaining that Memorial Park?
I, I don't.
You don't understand the question?
Yeah, I mean, because I just, I just stated that.
Right, we had $17,000 in the budget to take care of, taking care of the park itself. But I think we'll, I think Mr. McLaren, that's his job. He is the director of that park and Parks and Recreation and that's part of our fields.
I think this item number eight on our agenda, which was the agreement with the American Legion, was the ways that he wanted to expend his grant funds. And I think we can address that and this other issue we can look at separately.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So do we have a motion?
I so move.
Second?
What's the motion?
That we adopt the resolution for their, for their capital improvements.
Capital improvement.
That's just for this thing here.
Just for their grant.
You've made a motion. Have you made a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
I'll circuit it.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, item number nine, downtown revitalization project.
One of the things that I've been working on is along with the Assistant City Manager and our Economic Development Director is downtown revitalization efforts. And then also with our, our Public Buildings and, and Grounds Director, Doc. And from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the downtown used to have really nice street trees, but they were the wrong types of trees that were having a pretty detrimental effect onto the, the concrete and more specifically the sidewalks downtown. One of the things that I think that we could do to increase our, our downtown when it comes to the visual effects on it is to put street trees back into our downtown area. And we could do that at a very cheap cost, but we need to put the right street trees in that, that don't have the deep or widespread root systems that end up destroying our, our infrastructure downtown as well. So one of the things that, that I've been working with, with our team is trying to restore the pride back in our downtown so that we can get people where they're, they're interested in, in bringing the businesses and renovating some of these empty buildings that we have. In order to do that, I think we need to start with, with, with small projects that have, that are low cost and high impact. Putting in street trees. We already have decorative lighting. We already have benches that are sitting down at Public Works. We just need to install more, putting in more flower planters. And then eventually getting to a point where we can upgrade our, our sidewalks. That would be a, a, the project that, you know, is not this year, probably not next year, but, but down the road as we get more economic development, that brings in more revenue, then we can boost that local economy and then start, start putting in some nicer, more costly things throughout our downtown to make it more appealing. You know, at the end of the day, I think if you look at point three, we want a, we want a downtown that's thriving. It's where people can come and have coffee or have dinner or go hang out or go shop or, you know, have a drink downtown. And you have good pedestrian foot traffic coming through there. We're at a point, you know, now where a lot of our downtown businesses, about half of them are, are empty. Some of them are falling in on each other. And I think it's, you know, my advice to council is that this is the city's responsibility to, to start with small projects so that we're able to increase the, the interest for small business owners to come down. Because it's, it's going to be a huge investment. And with Amazon Web Services coming here, I think it's the right time to start looking at these things and do these, these small, low cost projects that have high impact. So, and please, as you're looking at the slides, they're not going to be 100% accurate to our downtown. But what I wanted to do is give you all kind of a, something that will spark your, your imagination of what our town could be. So that's our current downtown. These are, these are three types of trees that, you know, we could put in downtown. White crepe myrtles, the pink crepe myrtles, or just plain, you know, regular trees that don't flower. I know that all these trees, you know, and the mayor and I have talked about it, but trees, trees cause a mess. You know, and we have a horticulture department that, that would be responsible for coming in and blowing off the streets and, and keeping those clean and, and our, our Public Works Department that comes with the street sweeper to clean up. I believe that in our current budget and not even asking for a budget amendment, that we have the funds to go ahead and put in street trees on, along both sides of our, our downtown and Main Street currently. As we're continuing, I just wanted to, you know, give not only vision for you all, but vision for the public of what our downtown could actually be. These are AI-generated photos of our current infrastructure that's actually dilapidated right now, but what it could be, you know? And it starts with just bringing in some nice, nice trees, the planters, the benches, and, and doing something that is low cost and high impact. This is, you know, I took a picture of the, the bakery and, and asked AI to generate it into a bakery that's about to open. And, and, you know, again, this is something that, that's so small that, that a business can do. And I'd love to work with our businesses downtown and our Economic Development Director and help them as well as they, as they start, as they start renovating their spaces if they're either renting or buying. This is a, you know, and again, don't, don't focus on the building shape as much. AI is not perfect right now. But, you know, we have the ability in, in the upcoming years to, to really like create a space that, that is, is friendly for our community and also, you know, brings more pride to, to our city. And then even getting to a point to where, you know, we have these three buildings, if you're going down Main Street on the right to where one of them, where one of my friends was actually interested in, in, in doing this project and renovating three buildings that are, are adjacent to each other, that are, they're basically falling in on each other, each other right now. And he would love to renovate them and then put in a rooftop bar slash restaurant. You know, it just comes with, you see the, the city's part on this really is just some flowers and some trees and, and planters. And then our corner building, we've been in, in pretty deep discussions with, with them as well. And they're, they're asking the city, what, what does the city want? What does the city need? So working closely with them as well to, to try to create a space for, for all the Richmond County residents. And not just for Richmond County. I think that, you know, in the future and just starting with something small, that, that we can make Hamlet a destination spot. Right now, our destination is going down to the depot. It's a great location, but let's, let's start expanding on that and creating a little bit more. And that starts with, you know, my proposal of putting in, in street trees. We already have the decorative light poles. You know, we get to the point where we do a project for brick accent sidewalks. The seeding and planters we already have. Doing asphalt road restoration in the future. The, the facades that's going to come on the business owners and then the rooftop bar opportunities is going to come on the business owners. But I think it's also the, the city's responsibility to help create that vision. That being said, I mean, we're also, we're meeting tomorrow. We've had several conversations about the Opera House. And there's, there's little to no asbestos in it from the initial look. And we are, are working to, to get somebody that's actually certified in there to, to validate what, what was told to us when we had somebody walk through it. But, you know, we have this, this great building that we could partner with a nonprofit with, get grant funding and then turn this back into a destination just through the Opera House and some small streetscape projects. Which would ultimately lead to the renovation of the inside as well. The left sides are, are current situation in the Opera House. But, you know, it could end up in the future being something very similar to the right side. So, you know, again, just trying to spark the, the vision, the interest and the, the desire to invest back in our, our downtown and, and create a destination again. From my understanding is Hamlet used to be a destination place. It used to be a place where people wanted to come. And, and now, you know, it, we, we have very little ado, but it starts with just doing, my advice is that it starts with just, starting with just a little bit of a facelift. Small, low cost, high impact projects to get Hamlet to where it needs to be and bring life back into it. So, you know, future, and again, don't focus on the road. I know it's too narrow and this is AI-generated. But just, you know, we have the ability through planters, trees, some, some good landscaping to really do something great downtown.
I think it's all beautiful and it would be a, a dream come true and it would be a beautiful job. But what about Hamlet Avenue?
That's part of the project as well. That's part of our downtown. But I think right now we're, we.
Concentrating just on Main Street.
Yeah, and then we, once we put in the, you know, what I'd like to do is once we put in street trees down Main Street, then we shift over to Hamlet Avenue as well. I, I've already started generating stuff for Hamlet Avenue as well, so it, it did not get thrown to the waste. I understand, you know, as a, as a previous planner, I understand how one street downtown can become a rival with the other down street, other downtown street and it can create friction. So we want to show the love across our, our downtown area. But there, there's, there's not nearly as many empty spaces on, on Hamlet Avenue as there is on, on Main Street right now. So I, you know, again, what I, what I'm asking for is a motion to approve, deny or amend, you know, but essentially asking to be able to put street trees back in our downtown. Not asking for money. We have the money in our current budget. Just, just asking for permission and looking for council's vision as well on what they think, you know, what type of tree should go down in, in our downtown area. I spoke with a really good friend that is a florist out of Moore County and, and she's, she's, works on a area beautification committee and does this across an entire city. And she had recommended the crepe myrtles or, and she said, hey, give me a call anytime. If, if they don't want a flowering tree, I'll tell you exactly what kind of tree that you need to put in that's not going to destroy your infrastructure.
And let's not, let's not forget front street also.
Yes, absolutely.
Looks a lot like the plans in there. I was in Pinehurst over the weekend and it looked like downtown Pinehurst. It looked like almost a carbon copy of Pinehurst.
That's, that's AI-generated. I didn't use another town.
Looks like we copied.
We can dream. Do we have a motion?
I so move. That we approve this.
All in favor?
Installation of trees.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's see, city manager's report.
I had put my city manager's report within the, the agenda packet. I can go through it if you all want, but if you've all read it in its entirety, I, I don't want to waste anybody's time either. I'd, I'd rather open it up for questions. um, I, I don't want to waste anybody's time either, I'd, I'd rather open it up for questions on what I posted in it, uh, but saying that, you know, again, was everybody able to read through the, my report?
Yeah.
It was pretty significant.
Has the transition to Tetter been successful?
It has. Yeah, we, I mean, with any transition, there's little bumps in the road, and, and we dealt with them, and, and got ahead of them immediately, and working with Harold and Luke from Tetter has been, uh, nothing less than amazing. They're, they're a great crew, and they're doing great stuff, and, uh, they're extremely motivated, and also meticulous on, on their, their job, they take pride in it, uh, which, which I thought was really motivating for myself as well, because I was like, yeah, these guys are really taking this serious, um, beyond what I expected out of a, you know, a company that, that, that does sanitation, they have went by far above and beyond.
Any major calls giving citizens tax burn, I mean, heartburn about that?
I, I haven't heard, to be honest with you, I've, I had one complaint, and if I remember right, it was a individual that was like, my trash hasn't been picked up for the last three weeks, and, uh, and if I remember correctly, again, don't, please don't quote me on this, um, because it's been several weeks ago, is because he hadn't paid his bill.
He what?
He hadn't paid his bill.
Oh. I'd do it.
I guess shifting gears on that, and I, I just have a question, I might have should have asked it when we, within, uh, consent agenda, but annual tax settlement, and this could be for you or TC, um, when does it stop? When does it end? Do, what do, what, what do we do? I mean, I, we look on the report and it's fourteen thousand, and fifteen thousand, and ten thousand, do, does everything have to go through legal, like we've done with the one gentleman?
I think what he's saying is there's no recourse for people who don't pay their taxes.
At what point is, what is the recourse?
Yeah, and I want to make sure, um, can you ask the question again, uh, Mr. Stewart?
So I just want to know, does everything have to go through legal? What is the, what is the recourse? When, when does the ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars stop?
So you're, you're talking about when someone doesn't pay their, their property tax?
Right.
And then it starts going through the foreclosure process?
Right.
Yeah, so, that's a, a good question. So what's happening, um, and this has been going on for probably the past seven years, uh, maybe longer, is Richmond County, um, hired an outfit to do tax foreclosure collection, and, uh, basically, every time someone's overdue with taxes, they start that process. What happens is, is if you're overdue with taxes in the city of Hamlet, of course, you're also a Richmond County taxpayer, and, um, once they file that lawsuit, they name the city as a defendant. We're not really a defendant, but they do that, so if the property gets sold, we get named as well. So what happens is, is you have Hamlet taxpayers, um, who are basically, there, there's lawsuit being initiated by the county to collect those taxes, and, you know, if they're overdue to us as well, then sometimes we get paid, but that's a long way of saying, we really don't have any control over, uh, the county initiating these kinds of lawsuits. Now, what I could say, Mr. Stewart, is if you think there are cases where folks are being, where it creates a real hardship, it's not necessary, that is a policy decision the county has made to kind of use the process they're using, and they could change that. So you, or members of council, could certainly talk with the commissioners about, about what they're doing right now.
So, if some of these people are still residing in this property, and their aridage extends almost seven or eight years, when does the county initiate proceedings? Now, if they're paying the county taxes and not us, then the county's not going to initiate a lawsuit.
I, I think that's right, I haven't checked, but I think you're right, um, because what's happening, to your point, Ms. Covington, is there will be outstanding county taxes, and then if there are also outstanding city taxes, you know, we hear about it, but.
Then we're secondary.
There, there's honestly not a real sort of, uh, timeline for when it happens, some of it depends on, you know, if you have a heirs property or things like that, it may be, pardon me, years and years, sometimes lawsuits go fairly quickly, and, uh, I don't say that's good or bad, but the, the attorney who kind of runs that program does a really big volume of these kinds of things throughout the state, and I think sometimes, um, his kind of internal bureaucratic process takes a really long time, and other times it's gonna be pretty quick.
Well, I'll just, this is the, the example, and I don't, I don't know whether the county has initiated any actions, but this individual owes the city seventy-seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. He's accruing these taxes at the rate of a hundred and nineteen dollars a year, and how long did it take for him to get a back tax bill of seventy-seven hundred dollars?
Great question, so probably quite a long while. Now, of course, property values.
That's why I'm saying if they're, but, should we not initiate action? Or can, is that just something that doesn't happen?
We can, and, uh, if council wants to talk about that, I'd be happy to discuss in closed session with you, kind of about the pros and cons of that process.
Okay.
But we, we collect property taxes.
It's one that's seven thousand dollars, and their taxes are thirty-five dollars a year.
Yes, ma'am. So we collect property taxes, we have that right.
I can't live with that.
But, but if that's something council wants to discuss, we've got a closed session tonight, in fact.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions about the City Managers' Report?
If not, Mayor, I, I wanted to also take the opportunity to, uh, introduce our new interim Chief of Police, uh, Chief James Carstow, he actually has a few words to say, so I was just gonna let him.
Mayor, council members, citizens, I appreciate the time.
Will you please give the microphone, so everybody can hear you?
I'm sorry, I hate having my back to the door. Um, first off, I'd just like to thank everybody for the confidence, um, and the support that I've received, uh, since taking over as interim chief. Um, it's an honor to lead, uh, the men and women of the Hamlet Police Department, um, and be able to serve the community. Um, I've been here a short period of time, not everybody, everybody's like, well, who's James Carstow? Um, so, just a little, in a nutshell, uh, born and raised in New York, uh, started law enforcement in Estes Park, Colorado, little, small mountain community, uh, back in early two thousands, uh, moved to South Carolina, where I did most of my career at the Rock Hill Police Department, and retired in twenty-twenty-one, um, stepped out of law enforcement, uh, had my own business, and then business got slow, and, uh, had to find a job, so, um, tried to stay out of law enforcement, but Hamlet, uh, something drew me here, uh, applied for the lieutenant over investigations, and, uh, that's where I've been, uh, ever since until, uh, I've been asked to be interim chief. Um, again, what the future holds, uh, I hope it holds that I take over as Chief of Police, um, and be here for the next ten years, if possible, as long as everybody will have me. But, again, I want to thank everybody for the support, mayor, council, um, city manager, and hopefully the residents of, uh, Hamlet greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
That's it.
We're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, so comments from council.
I can tell you this buddy loves doing it.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, nothing other than just a welcome to you, Chief, uh, based on what I've heard from our city manager, you, you'll do a fine job, and we're looking forward to, to having you here as our chief.
Thank you, sir.
Other than that, I don't have any further.
Mr. Sellers?
I'd like to echo, uh, uh, Councilman Martin, welcome to Hamlet, have a great confidence in you, and I'd like to commend, uh, Esco on that final presentation on that, and also Gerard Morrison, thank you for your interest and the information on that. But that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Lewis?
I'd like to thank all the, uh, employees of Hamlet, because you're what makes Hamlet what it is. We just sit up here and try to make the right directions and things like that, but we appreciate all your hard work and everything that you do. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Um, I'll say, uh, please, please, please support the John Coltrane edutainment.
Entertainment.
Entertainment. I do sound like him, and that's my dad. Uh, edutainment, citizens, council, I encourage everybody in this city to support that. We have a world-renowned gentleman that is, was born right here in the city of Hamlet, and no, no reason why that place shouldn't be packed out on October fourth. So please support that, and we're back to school. We are back to school, I encourage you all to please keep our educators and our, our children in prayer. Um, early college, uh, started August seventh, um, and August twenty-fifth is for all of Richmond County schools. We have some immunizations, which is on August twentieth, so check the county site and check the, uh, school system site to find out about all those things that, that needs to be done. Um, contact superintendent, contact the, the, the school system if you have questions, but more importantly, August twenty-fifth is approaching, and, uh, please keep, again, educators and our, our, our kids in prayer for that. Yes, sir.
Watch out for school buses.
What, what's that, sir?
Um, Donovan Heights, August twenty-third.
Back to school, yeah, back to, August twenty-third, Donovan Heights Back to School Rally, and if you have anything that you wanted to, uh, participate or, or donate for that, um, please do so, I think there's flyers for that as well. So, what's that, uh, mister?
I say watch out for school buses and children getting on the bus.
Absolutely, absolutely, and it's a real thing, I mean, education's a real thing, and we've got a lot going on with the, with state legislators, with education and all that great stuff, so we just, we're just asking for everyone, all citizens, and most of all, our, our employees, thank you so much. Uh, we sit up here and we talk, and we give our advices, and do all the things that we think we possibly can, can help make the city better, but our city employees are the machine that's keeping it going every single day, so thank you so much.
All right, Mayor Procham?
Um, I want to thank, I read your report in detail, so I don't have any questions about anything I understood, but I do want to commend, it makes me very happy to look out there and see citizens and employees, particularly employees, not sliding the citizens, but the employees here, because they are the heartbeat of this city. We, I've always said, the city of Hamlet had the best employees of anybody in Richmond County, and I still believe it, despite everything. But, um, I, we have hired some new people this month, or I assume it's been in the past month, we have somebody new in the finance office that's helping our very abled financial director, Edna, and we have a wonderful new interim police chief, who's, and I was one of the ones who said, who is Lieutenant Carstow? But I'm glad to hear you're here, and if you came from New York via Colorado through South Carolina, and you ended up North Carolina, maybe you're gonna sell. So, also, we had a Corporal Richard Pino that was promoted this month, and so, um, you know, it's obvious that the city of Hamlet is still a riv- living, breathing organism filled with wonderful people, and it's my honor to serve you. Thank you.
All right, well, since I'm the one who goes last, I'm going to be a little bit redundant, but, um, interim chief Carstow, we're very glad that you're in this position now, and and hope you, much success. Um, I'd also like to welcome our new employee at City Hall, Dakota McCormick, who is working with Finance Director Edna Miles, and I would also like to commend our City of Hamlet Fire Department and Chief Trey Goodwin for the teamwork they've shown in this past several weeks, months, in handling repairs, upgrades, and installations of equipment to help the department be more effective at their job, and lower the city's insurance rating, which saves all residents money on their insurance rates. A quote from their Facebook page is, "By utilizing the diverse skills within our department, we are able to complete these projects in-house, saving taxpayer dollars while maintaining a high standard of service and readiness for our community." So I thank you very much for your extra effort, and also, this Friday night, the movie Elemental will be shown outside in our city park, seating starts at eight o'clock, and the movie will start about eight forty-five, and the weather is looking good for that showing. So, that is all I have. Um, now we need a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?